Camera back on. All right, we're good. So this is an actual time. Go ahead, please state your name and the place you live.
Hi, I'm Michael Thamel, Idaho Forest, Grangeville, Idaho. We, uh, did know. Not just, not just representing Idaho, you're in the between Smiths Ferry and Rainbow Bridge area. Brian Wilson, he's trying to do this, and Clerk Miller, I realize I forgot to send you a copy of that, but I can provide you with it.
It'd be great. I did not receive it. I don't know if the Commissioners received it.
You did not?
Yes.
Okay. You did?
I'll, I'll just hit the high points here. I mean, we're on a quick schedule here. Basically, we have operations currently going, um, both, well, to the west of Smiths Ferry right now. We've had pretty extensive operations all season. Jim could speak to his operations, but they've got some stuff in the Garden Valley area. It's generally tussock moth salvage, so time is a little bit of the essence for the timber quality. We also have some pretty extensive timing restrictions, as I outlined in the letter, for goshawks and formulated some snowmobiling, so. So basically, there's two questions here is, uh, we would like to go to operate into early winter. Right now, we're having a very difficult time getting trucks back home after they make a morning run up to Grangeville, and they're having to take some pretty extreme measures over through Indian Valley, um, in the council area to come in the back way. It's also eliminating one round that some of those trucks are able to make, so instead of two rounds per day at Grangeville, they might only get one. So I guess I'm, uh, and feel free to jump in, guys, but, um, basically, we have the question of the existing operations, and also we have the question of Packer Summit Salvage, which is an Idaho Department of Lands timber sale, which is going to be selling October 8th. It's, uh, east of Smiths Ferry, and if we are unable to, and that would likely mostly take place next season, but if we're unable to haul or get some sort of clearance to use the bypass with, my request is to use empty trucks, only, our request is only empty.
Empty would require, if you give us enough time to get back, if we can get it loaded through the timeframe, but it comes back empty, you can't make it. So that would help us out.
As I've outlined, uh, you know, we have professional drivers that they're used to, obviously, narrow mountain roads, and I, I feel really good about our safety record with these, with these drivers, so. Two thousand loads in the Packer Summit next season. Not to mention probably, I know there's other groups affected, between Renfro, Brian Wilson, and Tru Brown Brothers.
Renfros already talked to me. They've called and wanted to know too.
I understand this is a pretty popular topic.
We, uh, these guys had the, the mill, Matheson, last week come in and ask
Yeah.
for it. Um, we, we kind of punted it to ITD, and they punted it right back to us to make that decision. Uh, the big issue honestly is the subdivision, the folks that live along that road get dusted out. So is there any, any proposal to water the road or help with that kind of an issue?
Yes.
Would that be a possibility?
Yes. And I, I did miss that in my, in my written request, but yeah, we would be willing to, whether it's in-kind work, whether we're providing a water truck or a blade as needed or as directed by the county, or it's a financial contribution for your folks to take care of that road maintenance. You know, we're kind of getting down to the end of the best season, you know, for the most part, but, you know, occasional watering would probably go a long way.
And I think it's close open back up November 15th, isn't it, the highway? Well, this is
That could be, that could be right. Basically, on our jobs, we're really remote, and, and as I said, with snowmobiling and stuff, we're not able to really operate too far into winter, so it would be just kind of the front end of winter, and November, going about November 15th, so yeah, that would be our request.
And then I think we would have to look at it and see how it worked, and then you'd have to go back in next year for it again. I don't think we should just make this a cart launch thing for the rest of the season.
You mean for the rest of the project?
For the rest of, until the project's done, I think.
I had talked to some other guys too, and we were, would be willing, if we need to put the oil down, we would all pitch in and help that, if we needed to next year, so. And the areas that they need the dust kept down, you know, so the water truck ought to be able to, they could put that. It's not oil, but it's that, the stuff they put on the roads to keep the dust abatement down.
Right.
Yeah.
So is this just a one-way request? I mean, if we just allow the northern travels, that you didn't get too many traffic on that thing?
Well, we need to come back empty with trucks.
At what time?
Well, like this morning, we're loading trucks in the morning, and we're making it up through there, but then they come back from Grangeville, and they're getting back around between noon and one o'clock, and they can't get through.
So you're asking to come south?
Come south through there, get back to the job, yeah.
So the postal service is going to go up 11:30, 11:15, 11:30-ish? So they would be out of there?
Yeah, we would be back there after lunch, check it out, you know.
So is this true, I mean, you're just talking about your group, so the rest of the people that are coming, they're asking this also? The logging industry, you know, what times of day, or was it scheduled, or who knows?
It could be a lot of different.
I can't speak for them, because I just know what my trucks are doing, you know, so I don't know what Jim's, because they're coming back from there, you know, because they're coming back from his mill, going back to Garden Valley, that's the Renfros are doing that, and I'm not sure of that.
Sheriff? Oh, go ahead.
Anywhere from 10 to 2.
Right when they're shut down, huh?
Yeah, it's really getting this.
It's getting a lot of people. Sheriff, you got something to say?
So first responders.
You gotta come to the mic. Yeah, sorry.
Yep, we better let everybody hear this one.
So first responders, we're going to be using that, uh, as well if they, um, can't open the road up after a blast. But they're hoping that, like, if we give them enough, uh, time to clear the road, we can still go through there during that 10 to 4, or 10 to 2 timeframe. But if we can't, we will also be using that north and south. So if there's just some type of communication, I don't know if you have, um, radio communication with ITD's workers.
Remember, it's a CB radio, maybe it's not really into what that.
That would be, and it's not going to happen all the time, just so they're, you know, be aware that other people may be using that as well, if you decide to allow that.
The other thing is, I think it's 10 to 2 on Monday through Thursday, so Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, you guys got to use the regular road.
Yeah, right.
Because we're going to destroy that dirt road going over. I mean, it's going to go pretty fast.
And that's only during those times when they're doing the blasting in the fall, in the spring, then they pick it back up in the fall. And I hear everybody's concern. It's, it's a terrible road to put you guys on to drive over. I'd rather put you guys on it though, that are used to driving it.
We, we all hog hopper before.
You know the road, and, I mean, we're stopping through commerce. I, I am frustrated with ITD over the fact that they're closing our road from 10 to 2. It's, it's a ridiculous time to close the road.
They should be doing that work at night. To me, it seems like this, that should all be done at night.
Jeff said it's too difficult to blast at night. You've got to be able to see, because you got flying rock.
You just light the thing and run.
Tell them to hire you next.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, first light, I mean, anything, but anyway, I think we have to, you know, try and help people. We're never going to get the, the tussock moth stuff out of here. If truckers can't make money doing it, and get it off the horse.
Sheriff, do you know, do they have people at the barricades on both sides of Round Valley Road? Is there actually somebody there?
There was the day I came through there, a while ago, and I told them I was coming up from a timber job to come to here, and they, they let me through. I was coming up for a work-related deal, that, but if not, they wouldn't have let me through. There was a barricaded pickup of a man in at each end.
At each end?
That's what ITD told us last week.
So I was going to say, I think, and I agree, is that of all the people that should be using that road, you guys have the capabilities and the skills to be doing it. This is what you guys do. And my biggest concern is that if we let traffic on there, we've got to be able to shut down the general public. So, I, you know, I don't know if that's the increased vigilance on those guys, from 10 to 2 at the two ends of the project, or what it's going to take, but I mean, that's, that's the assurance that I, I've got to have to be feeling good about this.
You know, the, the logging truck, you know, the kind of, the empty log truck, that was, you know, that would be legal, you know, not a car pickup. You know, if somebody comes through with a 40-foot camper, you know what they would do, and they could get it all screwed up, you know, so.
We'll have to write a letter. ITD requested the letters, and we'll give it to the Sheriff's Department also on exactly who is authorized to come through there. And then they will give that to their flaggers, so.
So Matt, could you get us a list of the loggers that you think are going to use that road? And we're going to need that list so that we can give it to ITD.
Yeah, as I say, speaking of the communication factor too, I think is it the project coordinator that has the EMS radio? Or the ability to get in touch with dispatch?
I have, I have a radio that we can get ahold of, with an accident, for like helicopters, I forget for help, but I don't have anybody to talk to, the road people, right?
So it seems like we just got to improve that communication, like, is like if the, you know, that's folks are calling the, the, you know, to see if they get through the road construction right now, and they're going to take that bypass road as just to be able to put like an all-call out or something?
I guess we could also tell all our drivers going to, that if we're on that road, and it was a emergency vehicle, we got to get out of the way now, which they would be doing anyways, but they would make sure to do that.
Right, because if, if they have someone at each end, and they have radios, then they can, you know, let us know as well. Make that communication perfect, can work out.
The other issue.
These guys are used to maintaining safe travel speeds, and we probably put a speed limit on them, I would say.
Well, and I think as we're just letting empty logging trucks through, I think that's okay. I'm concerned about the cattle guys, because they're going to want the same thing, but I wouldn't want to take a cattle truck over that loaded.
Um, can I see the 50-foot trailer? We're all decked up, and short, trading, short log truck, empty, so.
We can try it and see how it goes. I know we're going to catch hell for it, but that's all right. We, we've caught hell before.
So Doug, it's not on our agenda to approve the postal service, which they're already using it daily. So we probably should amend it that, or just the small.
It's a pickup.
It's a pickup.
It's a pickup.
A Matheson pickup, try. So they're already using, I think that's probably, they're decided apparently, huh?
They told us they didn't need our permission.
No, I should have taken the vote, but we need to put it in our letter stating that they're okay to use it.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion then to allow, and Matt's going to get us a list of Wilson and Renfro, who all is going to be doing this. And, uh, we'll get it to those guys, so then who to let through and who not to let through, and as soon as possible. That'll work for you guys. I, I think that'll work for us.
Understanding that some of these are Jippo trucks that, you know, they don't say, you know, they may not say Wilson or
Well, we just need their name.
Yeah.
Just need the name of the truck. It's not hard to do, so.
We'll put in a letter of request too, that you guys need to sign, that you're going to help maintain that road, so, knock down the dust.
I guess an alternative idea would ask is, what about timber sales that would be allowed? So it's going to say right on the load what timber sale it's off of. If it's coming off of High Forks GNI Timber Sale, that would be a permitted timber sale versus, you know, the trucks are always coming and going, you don't always know. It might be, it might get kind of difficult.
I don't know anybody else that's logging right now that's down there, other than you guys. There was some private stuff behind me, but I think they're done. I think Phil's done out here with his. I don't.
I guess I'm thinking about maybe a, um, an occasional truck of a Brown Brothers, I don't know who, who else might be. I've been talking to him about that, but, um, but I would, that would be my request, if we could put a timber sale, a permitted timber sale, and that way we, and it's a little marked on the load, so they, they're going to know where they're coming from, so. And I think it's going to be primarily Wilson and Renfro.
If that's, if that's a loaded logger truck, it's going to be stamped.
You're right. You're right. No, that's a good point.
So my, what I would do is just say
Turn on the mic. Turn on the mic.
Sorry. Listening to this, my suggestion would be empty logging trucks.
Just any empty logging truck.
Yeah. I mean, it's going to make it simpler. I mean, all of a sudden, they're, they get down to the nitty-gritty, they're getting snowed out, they're going to call every Jippo in the country to come and help them. Is he going to be able to get you the name of every truck and license plate number within two days?
That's a good point.
I mean, empty logging trucks, I, I don't know who I talked to on the phone, but I would, I would much rather have these guys on the road than somebody with a, for, for, even a 20-foot camper. I mean, we've had wrecks in the canyon before that I'm really surprised nobody died up there. That, just my suggestion, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
That's a good idea. So Sheriff, who does the letter? We do the letter, you get it to them, or how does that work? I don't know that process.
You can allow them, I would think, you get it to them.
Good. I would have Prosecuting Attorney's Office draft a letter for their Commissioners to review with the language that you guys want. Submit it to ITD, uh, that, that would be my recommendations, Commissioners.
Uh, I don't believe she is. I believe Mr. Stavinsky is.
So I'd entertain a motion then that we authorize the use of empty logging trucks on, what are we going to call that road? The Bear Road? Bear Dome Road?
Smiths Ferry Drive.
Smiths Ferry Bypass?
Smiths Ferry Drive is my official name of the road.
Smiths Ferry Drive. From north to south.
I'll make a motion that we allow the request from Idaho Forest Group to allow empty logging trucks on Smiths Ferry Drive. That's emphasis on empty trucks only.
Any more discussion?
Just with the understanding that there will be a letter prepared to submit to Idaho Forest Group regarding, uh, this ongoing maintenance, the required ma- maintenance either in-kind or financial contribution to Valley County. Sorry.
And I would guess the dust abatement's going to have to start here pretty quick, because it's still pretty dusty.
And really, that would be just on the southern end, where you're talking about getting back into the neighborhoods, your houses.
Coming down into Smiths Ferry. Got your hand up, sir? Okay. Can you amend your motion?
So moved.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, amend the motion. All those in fairness to motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, see how it works.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay, good luck. They're already using that to say we just
Yes, that letter was a request for having approved, so.
We can include them on the letter.
That's what I'm wondering, if we can just put it all together. It's not on the action item, but it was out for an action item last year.
It wasn't as an action item last time?
I'm going to take a quick break, or
Okay. We got it, we need a break, you guys. We've been here for four hours. God, I hope we did that right.
Right, you're talking about Oh, we never know.
No, I'm good, thank you.
You know what? I'll take a water, please, thank you. Yeah, just regular, it's fine, thank you.
Is that frozen?
It is frozen.
Refreshing.
It's okay, I can just.
Wow.
Good refrigerator.
Yeah, it is.
Already opened, and it's fine. Thank you.
Pass out some, you don't have to follow this, but it'll just, you can look that later if you want to. Kathy and I are going to kind of just touch on a few, a few of these things. We're not going to go into a lot of detail.
I always love it when she says gems.
Please, if I can, just so I can attach it to the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. The meeting has now ended.
All right, sorry, guys, took a little moment of thought. Next one up is a presentation by our esteemed lecturer.
Good afternoon. So Kathy and I would like to just give you some information. We want to give you an update. The Gem Go Live date for the DMV is August, excuse me, October 13th. There's a lot of concerns regarding this. Um, they were supposed to go live back in April, and we had started in-person training, and then of course COVID hit, and everything kind of got flipped upside down and put on the back burner. So in the meantime, we have been trying to do as much training as we can, and I, I'm just going to touch on a couple of things, and then I'm going to let Kathy explain, because she's the one that's in there working in it. So ITD has offered to reimburse the counties for overtime training, because it's been very difficult for the employees to get any training. There's a few of the counties that have been shutting down. Canyon County's been shutting down every Wednesday for, I don't know for how long. But they've been shutting down every Wednesday, and we do have that in this little summary that I gave you. I did speak with Clerk Miller regarding getting reimbursed. The problem is, is if the ladies, they have already put in overtime, because they had to train this Saturday, it goes into the general fund. And I mean, that's just the way our budgets are. It's not going to come back into my DMV budget. So my DMV budget will reflect a shortage in my, a portion of my budget for 2021, if I pay out overtime, because I haven't, I didn't budget for it. So I have that concern. Um, and then the other thing is, is, um, there will not be any title work issued on October 8th or 9th. That is the Thursday and Friday before they do this program and implement it. That is an ITD thing. We have absolutely no say in that. There's quite a few counties that will be shutting down. I don't know why, but on Tuesday, Payette's going to close that week. Wednesday, Canyon and Gem will both be closing that day. Thursday, Canyon, Gem, Teton, Twin Falls, and Blaine will be shutting down. Friday of that week, Canyon, Gem, Teton, Twin Falls, Bannock, Elmore, and Blaine. All those counties will be shutting their DMVs down that week for those days before this is implemented for more hands-on training. So with that said, I would like to just point out one more thing. I have about 14 pages here of emails, and each email is separate from all the assessors. There's 44 counties. A lot of them were, I agree, I agree with what she said, I'll second that. But I have 14 pages of individual comments from other counties stating their concerns with this program. We're very nervous about it. We don't want a repeat of the driver's license fiasco that we had a couple of years ago. But that's what we're very, very concerned about. So with that said, I'm going to let Kathy come up and just touch on a few of the concerns that they've been having.
Welcome, Kathy.
Hello. Um, kind of a list person, so, um, kind of at the top of our list is, uh, in terms of training, we've had limited training. It consists of a virtual training session. When COVID kind of hit, our in-person was converted to virtual training. And that was good to kind of get us exposed to the system. And then, um, this September and October, ITD's now going to do an eight-hour worth of either in-person or virtual training. Our county has chosen to do virtual training, broken up into two four-hour sessions, so last Saturday and then this Saturday. They will be providing some additional virtual training sessions the week of October 5th through 9th. Each hour will have a different topic, and so we can tune in at our convenience to the different topics. The challenge in this has been that in order for us to do, um, these training sessions, is that we have to still be open to helping the public, but yet be able to have clerks access these training modules. So we've been not able to do that during the busy months. We just can't. We have, have too many people to help during that timeframe, but these last month or so, we've been really trying to focus on, when possible, we've only done a couple of days, closing down a terminal and, and having one open for service and the other person training. Most of the training has been self-directed, where we access modules or videos through the Idaho Transportation Department computers. And, um, do practice sessions, we can run their tests for them to make sure things are functional. So right now, we're feeling not prepared at all. I feel like in two weeks, I am going to be standing there, and a customer comes up and says, I want to transfer this title and get blah blah plate, and I will be useless, basically. Um, so I'm not feeling very well-prepared on that. Um, we're trying our best, um, to sneak in training. So yeah, we're, are expecting long lines due to us learning the system as well as these bugs. There's still a lot of bugs during our last training session. There were a lot of already identified bugs, and then we, through our training session and questions, helped the, um, ITD person identify approximately eight more, and that was just us. There are 44 counties and who knows how many more satellite offices, um, that are participating in these, um, sessions and having bugs identified through their, um, sessions. So, uh, ITD is not being very proactive in letting people know about this in their terms. They feel like, in quotes, this They feel like, in quotes, this will be a seamless conversion, that we will close down to customers Friday at the end of the day. And we'll go through the holiday weekend. And then Tuesday morning, we'll be up, ready to go. Um, on that note, they've been shared that we will be closing down for titles on Thursday and Friday. And the reason for that is because they need to allow time for titles that were initiated to finalize and go through the process in the old system. And then be fresh and ready on Tuesday on Go Live Date in the new system. Um, so there's gonna be definitely some feedback from customers that we will not, that will be frustrated with us not taking titles, but that is a statewide thing. That is not something we have any, any choice in. Um, they said they're gonna do a press release of sorts. I don't know what of sorts means. But, um, my coworker Megan Crum has taken initiative and created a poster for us to post in advance to let people know that no titles will be processed on October 8th and 9th. Um, ITD said they will be providing a poster for us to post at Go Live Day onwards, saying, thank you for your patience, new system. But, um, I'm not sure they're gonna be very proactive about saying, through a press release, new system. Expect extremely long lines, do your stuff early or give it a couple of weeks. I, I don't think they're planning on doing anything like that.
So basically what you guys are asking, you wanna keep the hours open from 9:00 to 4:00, that's your open.
For now.
For now, until we get the bugs worked out and do all that.
Yeah, um, if, to provide full coverage during courthouse hours, you can't have an eight-hours-a-day, five-day-a-week person to cover that. The courthouse is physically open longer than what a person who takes a half-hour lunch. And then we also have extra duties for opening and closing where we need to not be open to the public. So we would stagger, when we were covering the full hours, we're staggering. One person would come in earlier and one person would stay later. And we would have timeframes where they, that clerk would be by themselves to, to, to have that coverage. Um, with JEM Go Live, it would be really nice to be able to keep our current temporary hours, so both clerks are physically present during open hours, because right now we're kind of a team where, like, hey, have you run into this? How do you do this? You remember how to do that? Oh, wait, this person knows, you know, my coworker knows. So we're, can learn together and share information together. So you're not by yourself during the morning shift for that couple of hours, or you're not by yourself in the evening shift for the couple of hours, where you're just like, whoa. I have no idea, I think Meg ran into this, but I haven't yet.
And somewhere I saw, you wanna go through the end of November?
That was a question mark, that was me brainstorming. For sure, through the end of October. For sure. Um, uh, depending on how things are going, maybe, maybe we'll pick it up right away, maybe it won't have all these bugs. Maybe it won't be a big deal.
Hopefully.
If, if, yeah. Or if it's a big mess.
So are you guys gonna put this in the Star News this week? Just something like this, so that we can get ahead of this?
We could, I have nothing in my budget. ITD was supposed to be the one doing all this press release. We have signs up at McCall, DMV, I sent four signs up there today, and we've got signs down here. I was hoping ITD would take care of all the press releases, 'cause it does cost money.
Mm-hmm. But I'm assuming it would be this week they would have to do it, because October 9th and 8th and 9th is
Next week.
Next week. I mean, we gotta get on this pretty quick. And I can understand your concerns, Kathy, I appreciate you coming to us and talking to us, I think it's fine. We're gonna catch hell for it, but it's better to know what you're doing than to go in there and muddle everything up and then everybody gets backlog, I think.
Do you guys feel like you would benefit from having a day to just close down like the other counties are doing?
Well, from my perspective, absolutely. I would love to have that Thursday and Friday. Title processing is a pretty big, important part of our job. Um, from my viewpoint as a clerk, I would love those two days to be able to focus on this. Even when you're the, currently when you're the clerk that's training and the other clerk is helping customers, you can't not hear their conversations, you can't not, it's very hard to focus. Um, so I would love that. We, June is not officially asking for that. Um, she understands that customer service is extremely important and we could still do registration-type transactions. Um, so we definitely understand from a customer service standpoint, you know, the wish to stay open, so.
And you have what, a month to get your car titled? Two weeks? I don't remember. When you buy a new car, you have two weeks?
Without getting a $20 penalty, you have 30 days to transfer title, but you can only legally operate it for three days after your purchase date. You'd have to park it for the remaining, you know, 27 days or whatever.
You're gonna do that?
So what about just Friday? Just do one day training?
That's right, I was saying, even if you just said, hey, we're gonna close down Friday, we could put an ad in the paper this week.
That would be a good compromise.
If that'll work for you guys, that's, that's.
I'll take whatever.
But I think we need to put something in our local paper that we're gonna do this.
Yes.
Let's not rely on ITD.
And the county website.
And the website, yeah.
It went out to Mackenzie and have her put it on all the social media and everything else, so we're fully engaged on everyone.
I really appreciate that, because any efforts we can do to.
Sounds like a mess.
To try to alleviate that would be.
Yeah, you guys just went through it with the driver's license thing.
New system and everybody's trying to get on across the state. And they're, and they have two different systems that have to talk to each other that is.
So what are our normal hours?
Well, the normal courthouse hours courthouse-wide are 8:00 to 5:00.
So you guys are normally here 8:00 to 5:00. McCall also?
McCall, McCall has been 9:00 to 4:30. But Kathy and I have been discussing it, and I think what we're going to do is we're going to stay with the 9:00 to 4:00 and do not close for lunch. So there's always somebody available from 9:00 to 4:00, maybe through Friday in McCall. Because otherwise I have to stagger, again. I have to stagger employees. This way they can both be there, working together and cover lunches.
So you're gonna close down both Cascade and McCall on the 9th?
Yes.
Okay.
McCall needs this training very much, so.
Kathy, are we getting to the point where we need to have a three, three booth system? So the people aren't, I know we're two, two people at each office, are we getting to the point where we're gonna need three one of these days?
Uh, Cascade, I think we're, we're fine with the two full-time people. McCall may, um, especially during the busy summer time, we've been brainstorming a way to have a third person that is a seasonal type person. I'm not sure they're at the point where a year-round third person is necessary, but it's hard, because these are very complicated legal type transactions and to try to train a seasonal person, I mean, it takes several months for someone to even kinda start feeling a little comfortable and a year to really feel like you have it under your belt. But we've been brainstorming, maybe, you know, there are some basic registration transactions, basic Idaho title transfers, and that's all they do, or it can be the express lane. If you know your plate number, you can use, to renew, you can use this terminal. Um, they have expressed interest in that type of third person during their busy months.
Well, I, I'm good with it. Close them down on Friday. If you guys are good with it. I mean, they gotta learn the system or it doesn't work at all.
And then maybe we can only do the, the hours until the end of October.
That's what we'll try for down here, absolutely. Would you like us to come back after they've gone to this new system and give you an update?
Yeah, it might be something that, you know, we got smart people, they might figure it out first week and be good with it, so.
We're gonna hope.
Yeah, just keep us in the loop and let us know. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, the bugs, yeah.
Yeah, Larry?
Um, it might be a good idea to put on that news release that, um, where Snowmobile takes to be purchased, 'cause we've, we don't have that here now. So we could, you know, for the vendors, where they can buy those.
Do you surprise them on?
'Cause that, that trading won't even start till November.
It's up to each county to make that decision whether they will sell parks or rent stickers and when.
Yeah.
That's probably something we ought to add to it, and then we can take the cost out of both Recreation Assessor for the ad.
Be in my mouth.
Does that work for you, Jean?
Yeah, we'll figure it out tomorrow morning.
And Larry, you'll help them with the vendors, the list and all that?
Yeah, I've been, actually Kathy and I have been talking about it every time we get a, 'cause we've lost a lot of vendors and we get new vendors, so I've been letting her know. But then now I think about it, I oughta let Sheriff Front Desk know, so he doesn't send them back to Kathy, so she can send them back now. So I'll do that, too.
Okay, anything else?
I sure appreciate you guys.
Good luck, I know you can do it. Yep.
It sure hasn't been stressful at all, why not add a little more?
Yeah, just about time you get something figured out that changes. Always.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're only 20 minutes late, but we are gonna go, I'd entertain a motion going to Executive Session for Idaho Code 742061B.
So moved.
B, 1B.
Seconded.
Moving second by roll call.
Thank you, Nick.
Hasbrook Aye. As soon as we evacuate the facility here, it will be about 4:20, Doug.